Okay, the Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet regular session on May 6, 2025, 10 a.m. The Commissioners' Court Room in County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the application pledge of allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag. Commissioner Nettles will need those.
Well, Senator Father, we come to you today in Thanksgiving for being allowed to live in this great country, in this great state, and this wonderful county. As leaders, we ask for your guidance, and wisdom, and compassion. We ask you to grant us the strength to make tough decisions, and may the actions of this court bring peace and prosperity to all. Jesus Christ's name.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is to call for citizens' input into our concerns, and we have several to speak. Willis Cooper?
Morning, Commissioners, Judge.
Morning.
I brought my glasses today so I can actually read what I wrote. My name is Taylor Cooper. I'm going to reiterate a couple of points from previous visits, because I still haven't gotten answers, haven't gotten any replies from some emails that I've sent in. I'm still looking for some traffic studies that support the need for this east loop. By the way, I'm here with the No East Loop Group. I'm kind of curious how the Highway 6 expansion from the two to four lanes in each direction affects what is proposed as a north-south problem, and yet we tend to be, apparently, we may be fixing that north-south problem with the expansion of Highway 6, but it doesn't seem like that's in the same story. I've got a couple of population numbers, because again, the east loop is all being pushed because of growth or expansive growth out throughout that side of the county, and these are entire county numbers. Population growth from 2010 to 2022, the average was about 1.9% per year. And again, that's starting at about 215,000, I believe, thousand up to a current, depending on who you look at, estimate of the Brazos Valley Council of Government estimates about 251,000 for the year of '24, where the Census Bureau only has it at about 249,000. So when you look at that, that's about a 1% difference, a delta, and then you look at the fact that the growth rate is only about 1.9% or 2%, I'll give you the .1%. You're only talking about a 1% growth rate per year for the entire county. And we all know that that is basically the southern-west portion of the county, and maybe a little bit midwest out towards Relus and out 21 West. So it's kind of interesting to hear that we want to fix something that doesn't seem to be a problem. The other thing I've done is gone out to look at some of the traffic studies that are available out on Techs dot. There's actually live traffic data that you can go out and look at as a citizen. There's no sign-in, there's no login. They don't need to know your maiden name, or your password, or any good stuff like that. You can go out and just literally go and look. And in the east part of the county, it's very interesting, because most of the feeder roads that we look at are in east-west, because that's how it works. Other than 30 and 1179, most of those roads go east-west, because again, that's where the people are, and that's where they've concentrated in, and that's the easiest path of travel, rather than going from William D. Fitch up eight miles out of your way, and then having to come back west to travel to where you need to be. It makes sense to come up 6 and then go out east. We live actually out by the Aggieland Safari, so although this doesn't affect my immediate world, it affects families and friends. So it's very important to me to understand that I don't believe that this is entirely necessary for our county. Other thing that's really interesting, I'm anticipating to hear from maybe some of our county leadership in the meeting tonight, and I know y'all may or may not mention that, at Legends Event Center from 5 to 7 p.m. I'm hoping that the areas affected are going to be represented. That would be the Commissioners that represent both Precincts 1 and Precincts 2. The next thing I'd like to mention, and I've brought up before, is the Quiddity $11.2 million contract. We were told a couple of weeks ago by the General Counsel that the east loop project was not appropriate for Commissioners' Court, because it is not a Brazos...
So you didn't catch your time, Mr. Cooper. Okay, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Bobby Rosier?
Good morning. My name is Bobby Rosier. I'm here to protest the east loop. I think it's a not necessary waste of taxpayers' money. I don't think it needs to be. I don't have much to say about it this morning, but I'll have more next week. Been out of town since January through the end of March, and so I wasn't even able to keep up with this project, if I should be able to. But since we've been back, I've been here, been observing, and called you and Beverly Greenwood. Thank you for all the hard work and everything you've passed on us. Thank you. Another thing that bothers me is that we've got some people that's on our Commissioners' Court that want to see this project go through. And it seems that they're willing to put their fellow man, their neighbors, out of their homes, off their land, and interrupt their way of life. And they do this without any compassion. And then they tell you it's not their project, it's not their problem, they're not blamed. But what I say is, look in the mirror, and you'll see who's to blame. That person looking back at you, that's who's to blame.
Thank you. Robert Johnson?
Good morning, everyone. Lots happened since last week's meeting. Tonight, you're releasing new alignment, and the county also released a nice new video of their own on the loop with patronizing, soothing country guitar background music, with the message that they want to engage the public, and that they're concerned about neighbors, they're concerned about everything else, and this is just a study. Judge, you're feasting, saying if this is needed. Mr. Condolee, you're saying might be needed. But what is the truth? None of these things are the truth. The claim to prioritize public engagement is not the truth. All you've done is talk at the public. That's what that video was, and that's what the presentations have been. They are just presentations. They're not meetings. You don't talk to anybody there. You have other people out there doing it. You've refused to come to any of the meetings that we've invited you to from the No East Loop Group, and you refuse to put this on the agenda for your meetings, so that public can talk about it and have a discussion. Judge, you say if. Mr. Condolee, you say might. But we know that in this very room, meeting with John Pollster on updates on this project, he said that they're still ready to go, and it will be ready to let by the fall of 2026, and that he's never had a project that's gone six to nine months without getting funded by Techs dot, which means that this project is going to be ready to go in 2027, not 10 years down the road. So Judge, you keep saying if in these things, and yet, when somebody talks to you in the media about it, it's immediately, oh, this is going to happen. This project is going to happen, and we need it. Mr. Condolee, you talk about being concerned about your neighbors, and yet every one of these projects goes through your neighbors' houses. You remember the people you go to church with, the Patronellas and the Krishnicks? No matter what alignment we're talking about, they lose all five of their homes. So what is the real truth behind this? Are you trying to preserve a real county like the video says? Absolutely not. What this is, is you're working with the City of Bryan and their vision of annexation. We found that 2019, when they published their vision of annexation, it really depends on this loop going through. There are several different parts of the county that they're going to rezone into commercial, including where my house is on Planners Loop, and several other places right along the loop. So what does this mean? It means it's more tax money for the City of Bryan, it's more tax money for the county. So that's what's really important, and that's what you're prioritizing, not engaging with the public. Otherwise, you'd talk to us about it. You'd put it on the agenda. If you're really going to be truthful, if you really care about the people, if you really care about representing the folks that are here, you'll talk to us, you'll engage us, truthfully engage us, not just with emails and doing presentations, and you'll probably, if you really want to do something, you'll quit wasting everybody's time, and you'll just stay noted this loop, and really represent your people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Charles Mancuso?
Good morning, everybody. I didn't get to say goodbye to all the previous Commissioners. I hadn't been in a while, so I appreciate what the previous Commissioners have done for us. I want to welcome the new ones. Haven't talked to y'all or met at y'all, but congratulations for your position. A little bit about the east loop. My son built a house on family land. We've been on Mancuso Road for over 100 years. He moved in in October, no, he moved in in November of last year. He told me about a month ago, he says, look, he said, they've got a proposal, they're going to take my house and my five acres, and they're going to take a little part of your land, too. We planted over 100 trees out there, you know, so I mean, I know it's going to be a while, everything, but we'd like it to go some other place also, not where it's going. My main problem here is, I've got a sewer problem. My neighbor, believe it or not, over 60 years ago, put their field lines in my pasture, and I've noticed it for about a year, but about a month or two ago, it started getting real bad. I mean, water started percolating in my pasture. I tried talking to the neighbor, which is a relative, and they said they're going to work on it, which they did nothing. I got on the phone, made several calls. I called the county, the Health Department, County Commissioner. I've called law enforcement. I've called a bunch of other numbers, and the first day, nothing happened. The next day, things started rolling. So thank you for your help. Thank you for what you did. I've still got a mess. I've still got my neighbor's sewer water in my pasture, running down into my stock tank, and making a mess. It's horrible and everything, and we need to get it corrected, but I appreciate what they've done and helped out. I had my, oh, here's my pictures right here. Why don't you pass those down so they can take a look? It's a mess. It doesn't smell good. It doesn't look pretty. The longer we wait, the longer something's going to happen. The Health Department says they've got to be given 30 days to begin to correct the problem. 30 days, I mean, I may have dead animals, and I'm pushing it. Let's get it done now. I've located where the line comes in. And it was a family member that did this that didn't tell anybody that he put it on the other side of the fence. So we need to correct that real fast. We need more law enforcement. We need more first responders. We need to repair the damaged roads we have. My neighbors burn trash several times a week. Where do they get all this trash from? I don't know. They've got just, you know, two and a half acres. They burn it late at night. Nobody knows they're burning it. Couple of days ago, they were burning some trash that blew right into my house. So they're burning, they're burning way too often. They're bringing it in from the city. You know, they're scrapping metal and burning the plastic or something. But we need your help to get this alleviated. I appreciate what y'all do, and I appreciate y'all being up there and taking all the comments that are thrown your way. I guess I don't need the extra minute, but my pen fell apart. What you get the free pens. Thank you so much for your help. Okay, and good luck.
Thank you.
Oh, another piece? Man, these free pens are like that. Okay.
I got one upstairs you can have. Okay, thank you. Sabrina Brown?
Good morning, Commissioners. Nice to see y'all here. I hope you're having a good day. I'd like to start with just, I hope that everybody could pray for the little kitty that I saw on William Jennings Bryan this morning, unfortunately, on my way in. As I've said before, cats who are overpopulated and pressured into the right-of-way often get struck by cars and end up being an eyesore, so just prayers for the little kitties that are out there on the road. I'd also like to share a story that was published at KBTX this week, and y'all can find this online. More than 80 dogs were found in a Bediass home after an elderly couple's health took a turn and they became, came overwhelmed with overbreeding. It's a case of good intentions that turned into one of the largest rescue efforts the county has ever seen. In that portion of the county, we'd had a lot of dump dogs and things like that, and they were the ones to take them in and feed them and give them a home and everything, and it just got way out of control, Grimes County Livestock Deputy Gabriel Mendez told KBTX. Rescuers say that this case raises bigger questions about responsible pet ownership. "It's important to get your pets spayed or neutered so that things like this don't happen," McKay explained. "The sooner you can get them spayed or neutered, then the less likely you are to end up in situations like this, because one dog can turn into 100 dogs in just a couple of years." "Any long-term changes depends on the community," Ross added. "We have our mobile spay unit, spay and neuter unit, and we try to spay and neuter as many pets as we can," she said. "We understand that it goes beyond just what we can do and requires folks being willing to get their pets fixed." This was in Grimes County, so our neighbors, and this was dogs, but as you know, I'm here to advocate on behalf of the cats. And like dogs, one cat can turn into 100 cats very quickly, and those 100 cats may unfortunately end up in our right-of-way or in other spaces if the community cat populations are not managed. So I am once again urging the Commissioners to do what they can, to educate themselves and be supportive of my initiative to get more robust community cat management policies at the City of Bryan level. I've already shared educational materials with y'all, and I hope that you all have looked at them and will be able to support or inform your Bryan City Council partners and elected representatives, should they come to the county for resources or information about how to better support these cats. I'd also like to remind everybody in the room, including the Commissioners, of the dine-to-donate fundraiser that's happening tonight at Texas Roadhouse. Perhaps before everybody goes to the Legends Event Center for the No East Loop event, they could get some snacks and rolls, feed themselves at Texas Roadhouse. It's 10% donation from your receipt going to the Bryan Animal Center, and this will help, again, support their initiatives to spay and neuter our community cat populations. You will need a copy of this flyer. You can find that on the City of Bryan website. Just make sure that you present it and let them know that you're there to dine and donate. Thank you all so much for your time and commitment to our community.
Thank you. Kathy Bean?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I have several topics I wanted to address, and I'll speak quickly. First of all, I know that there is some sort of a meeting next Thursday, the 23rd. It's an all-day event where the different departments are making their presentations, and I was, I'm asking if it can be made available on YouTube, the way that the hearings here are held, so that the people who can't attend there and spend the whole day here can watch online. Also, I would ask that in the precinct, Chairman, Commissioners, information on the county website for each of you listed, if you could include information regarding the different boards and memberships that each of you have, like the BTU, and COG, and the MPO, and the Transit District, and list the positions that you hold in those different organizations, in order to encourage transparency for the public to know what you're involved in. I've been asked before why some of us ask questions about the agenda items, when we could actually speak to you ourselves before the meetings here. And as I've said, we ask a lot of questions to which we might actually have the answers or have spoken to somebody in one of your departments, but we bring them up here in the meetings, so that the public can also hear discussions about these items and have a better understanding of what this process looks like. And as far as the East Loop goes, I mean, it's not my property, I've said that before, but it does affect the rural community feel, not only of our county, but of our surrounding counties. They feel it, too, and as we become urbanized, as you're promoting, it starts to creep in on the surrounding counties, so your actions here affect not just our county, but other surrounding counties as well. The last question that I had for this segment is on the new precincts and the redistricting. I don't remember there being discussion of when that will take effect, and if that will affect November elections, should there be people, you know, items to be addressed there? So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chinese Ratliff?
Good morning. My name is Cheris Ratliff, and in my earthly experience, I think the three most important and treasured possessions on this earth are your spouse, your children, and your home and your land. And so this morning, I'm here to talk about our home. A little bit about my background, I was born in Shiner, Texas, raised on 400 acres. My family's company was founded in 1898 when barbed wire was invented in the state of Texas. And when barbed wire came in, my great-great-grandfather, who is the son of a Lutheran missionary from Switzerland that came to Texas, began forming sellable goods from the smooth wire that the farmers and ranchers were discarding. That company was founded, it still exists, it's now a fifth-generation family-owned, and we own companies such as Bedrock Truck Beds, Horizon Firearms. We formerly owned Rant Chan Truck Accessories and the, and Texas Depository, which is the world's largest privately-owned bullion depository in the world. And so I say those things because our family has always depended on the rural and agricultural lifestyle of Texans and Americans. My husband grew up on over 1,000 acres. He grew up picking watermelons and cantaloupes and soybeans and raising cattle. His family still runs a cattle ranch in North Texas, and they're being encroached by the DFW expansion currently. When we moved to Bryan College Station 12 years ago, we bought, or we built a home in South College Station on a lot. Four years ago, we moved to North Bryan, bought some property. My husband highly values capability and being, and teaching our sons how to do things on a ranch and with equipment and being capable members of our society. And so we moved to that land four years ago, having no idea that this would now be part of our reality. On April 3rd, well, let's see, we named that ranch Old Rock Ranch for two reasons. One, there's a 60-foot petrified palm tree on the land that the current alignment is being proposed to go over the top of, and also because it references Psalm 71:3, which is a verse that says, "Be my rock of refuge, to which I can always go." And so those two reasons, we named the property Old Rock Ranch, and we value the lifestyle that we've chosen and worked hard to create for our boys. My son Ryder is 12, my other son Rhett is five. They go to school in Bryan. We bought a multimillion-dollar building in Bryan, close to downtown, for my husband's company that he founded. We lease cattle land from the City of Bryan, and we run 40 head of cattle, have three horses, goats, dogs, cats, all the things. On April 3rd, we were called into the meeting with Quiddity Engineering in the County of Bryan, in this parking garage across the street, pulled up an image to show us that the alignment had, proposal had changed, and to show us a beautiful image of our ranch, 30 acres plus, of all of our trees being taken out by the new four-lane highway. So right out our back windows of our home that we moved to four years ago would be this proposed highway. I haven't spoken to one single person in my community, in our church, in our schools, in our communities, in our towns, that want this to happen, except for one, and that one person is a builder, so understandably, he needs more land to build on. As usual, if you follow the money, you find the motives. The proposal runs 2.7 miles, or, sorry, our home is 2.7 miles from Highway 6. If we expand Highway 6, we have Highway 30, we have 2818. I don't quite understand the need for another four-lane highway to run parallel to Highway 6. It would remove commerce, it would remove activity away, even further away from downtown Bryan, which is surprising to me because I know the work that's been put into the love and the expansion of that. So to close, I just ask that you see the faces of the humans that are affected by this, my boys, my children. We cannot replace what we have in this community. We'd have to go further out, even to, close to afford what we currently have, which would change school districts, change the town, change our jobs, change our business, et cetera. And so, on behalf of the families and the people of Bryan College Station who have chosen to live here to avoid DFW Austin, Houston, San Antonio, we love this community, and we ask that you consider that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kyle Greenwood.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. Kyle Greenwood, Brazos County. I'd say it's clear by today's speakers that folks are upset about the East Loop, and it's not a popular project. The reason we're all upset is that we've never had an opportunity to voice our opinions, and the comments we make here seem to fall on deaf ears. For six months now, we've been asking for the East Loop to be placed on the court's agenda. We would like the opportunity to voice our opinions and ask you questions, and for you to respond to us in court and on the record. And for the last six months, we've been ignored. We've all been lied to and deceived by our elected officials. They know it's unpopular, and they don't want to answer any questions about it from their constituents. In fact, Brazos County has never had a debate or a public discussion about how we would like our tax dollars spent, whether on this road, or that, or this parking garage, or a new one. And I firmly believe that if we knew back in 2020 what we, what the money would be spent on, the bond proposal would have been soundly defeated. For six months, we've been asking for transparency in the process and opportunities for citizen participation, and our requests have been ignored. For this and other reasons, I'm submitting this letter requesting that the comment period on the new alignments be extended from the current 17 days to 90 days. Brazos County and Quiddity have conducted this process under a veil of secrecy, and in so doing, have failed miserably at making the public aware, and so we need time to do your job for you.
Okay, thank you.
That's the last speaker of a citizen to put, so we will consider and take action on agenda items.
Judge, could I just have a minute?
Okay, sure.
I'd like to respond, in fact, I think I was invited to respond last week, and I didn't respond last week because I wanted to make sure I got the quote right. A few weeks ago, I responded to a request by a citizen to put items on a future county agenda. The speaker said, and I quote, "The last thing I'd like to ask is, I'd like to ask to add the East Loop and also the Highway 6 construction details and information onto one of these commissioner court agendas." And I, my response was to that request for construction details and information on East Loop and Highway 6 being made county agenda items. Clearly, Highway 6 is a tech stock project, and while the East Loop may be a tech stock construction project one day, no one has destruction, construction details and information to put on an agenda item for county action. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, counsel, for that clarification. Okay, so we will consider and take action on agenda items 3 through 19. Number 3 is approval of Proclamation 25-022 proclaiming May 4th through the 10th, 2025 as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week. Move for approval.
Second.
motion made seconded. Who else is going to come up for Sheriff Chief?
Okay, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas National Correctional Officers and Employees Week was first proclaimed May 5th, 1984 by President Ronald Reagan, when he signed the Proclamation 5187, creating National Correctional Officers Week to recognize men and women who work in jails, prisons, community corrections, and across the country. Whereas National Correctional Officers and Employees Week became the official name of the first week in May, when, in 1986, when the U.S. Senate officially changed the name from National Correctional Officers Week, and whereas National Correctional Officers and Employees Week has been designated as the week of May 4th through May 10th, 2025, by the U.S. Department of Justice and Federal Bureau of Prisons, and whereas National Correctional Officers and Employee Week honored the work of the correctional officers and correctional personnel for their service with honor, respect, and integrity, and raises the awareness and duties of hazards and sacrifices made by correctional employees. And whereas National Correctional Officers and Employees Week in Brazos County recognized correctional officers and employees for their role in safeguarding the citizens of Brazos County by providing safe, secure, and humane incarceration of offenders within their custody, now therefore be it resolved that Brazos County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through 2025 through May 10th, 2025, as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week. All citizens are encouraged to pay tribute to all the many correctional employees working in Brazos County for the vital public service that they provide, claims made the 6th, 2025, by the Commissioners Court.
Thank you, General. Do you want to speak?
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning. Judge. What would our community look like if we didn't have men and women that were willing to work in our jails and prisons? That show up every day to manage people that are often violent, often suffering with mental health issues, or at the very least, in the worst place in their life. And we're fortunate to have people that show up every day and do that work. A lot of them represented here today. So, to everyone here, thank you for your service, thank you for going through those doors, and doing life one day at a time. So, thank you, and I'd like to give the other representatives here an opportunity to say something as well.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Hall. I'm the warden at the federal prison camp in Bryan, Texas. I've been here a little over a year and a half, and I want to just take the time to say, congratulations to all of our correctional officers, and thank you for everything that you do. If you don't work inside of a jail or a prison, you cannot imagine what they go through each and every day, but it's because of them that you can sleep well at nighttime. And it's because of them I can sleep well at nighttime as well. So again, thank you for what you do. If the federal prison can ever do anything for you, please don't hesitate to let us know. But again, congratulations on your week, on a job well done.
Good morning, Judge Peters, commissioners, citizens of Brazos County. This week, we pause to say two powerful words. Thank you. Thank you, every correctional officer across Brazos County. You serve with strength, skill, and compassion, often in high-stress environments and too often without being recognized. Your work protects the public, supports rehabilitation, helps to create safer communities, and is vital to ensuring safe and secure environments for all who live and work within our correctional facilities. Much of what you do happens out of sight, behind the walls, far from the public view. Although what you do isn't always visible, its impact is lasting. We honor the sacrifices made by your families and deeply appreciate the support and encouragement that make your demanding work possible. During this Correctional Officer and Nurse Appreciation Week, and every week, thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay. Thanks, Sheriff. Thank y'all. Thank everybody who works in corrections. It's, yeah, we can have a picture, but, yeah, that's a tough job.
Yes, you're going to have to take a picture. You don't want to take a picture with us?
I don't want to.
Oh, yeah, you always, no, be first. You got to represent. Put the shorties in the middle. Because even up here sometimes, they tell me they, y'all got to turn sideways, remember the sideways thingy?
I better use a wide-angle lens.
Yeah. Thank y'all so much.
Maybe they can come up on the eyes.
I think y'all are going to have to layer.
You know, the federal prison used to be Alan Tanner.
Yeah, because otherwise, otherwise they can't, they can't see me. You need to put a, you need to put some shirt.
That comes back a while.
Put some shirt, no, no, you don't block them, you block me. I'm the only one that gets blocked. Come on down. Do the sideways.
No comment, Judge.
And I can stand on the chair.
Somebody may have to take a knee and get the, yep. Somebody can get in.
Yeah.
Because if I don't wave for you, then you're in my shot.
Hope that works.
Okay, now I'm going to count everybody.
That's kind of weird.
Oh, good.
Slow.
Okay.
But you got to get your finger out.
I'm going to session.
One, two, three.
There's nothing bad going on doing anything right now.
Thank you all. Thank y'all.
Actually, we don't sit on the floor.
We need a vote.
Thanks, Michael.
Okay, so we have not had a vote on that yet. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, done motion carries. And number 4 is approval of Proclamation 25-23 proclaiming May 6th through the 12th as National Nurses Recognition Week.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion made seconded. Who do I have representing nurses today?
Is Julie.
Have you, is, did Julie or someone?
There she is.
There she is.
Ah, there she is.
I'm prepared to give a 30-minute speech. I'll keep this quick. Mr. Coffey, who's over at Juvenile, said two very powerful words that need to be said here today, and he's like, is, "Thank you." I'm a nurse practitioner, I work directly for Brazos County, and there is a wonderful team of people, they could be entering this way, who take care of inmate patients every day, 365 days a year, 24/7, including holidays. Come on up, this is the team. And I want to give them a huge thank you for what they do. It is definitely a different way of practicing medicine.
And number four is approval of proclamation 25-23 proclaiming May the 6th through the 12th as National Nurses Recognition Week.
Move for approval.
Second.
Most made seconded. Who do I have representing nurses today?
Is Julie.
Have you, is, did Julie or somebody?
There she is.
There she is.
Ah, there she is.
I'm prepared to give a 30-minute speech. I'll keep this quick. Mr. Coffey, who's over at Juvenile, said two very powerful words that need to be said here today, and he's like, is thank you. I'm a nurse practitioner. I work directly for Brazos County, and there is a wonderful team of people. They could be entering this way, who take care of inmate patients every day, 365 days a year, 24/7, including holidays. Come on up. This is the team. And I want to give them a huge thank you for what they do. It is definitely a different way of practicing medicine. It's more of a traditional, transitional care, but care is given to our inmates safely, effectively, and done very well by this team. While I'm here, and I have everybody's attention, I do want to give some big shout-outs, because this team could not do what they do without this team. And I have come several times, especially to our judge and to our sheriff, who deserve special recognition, that we have not brought them a problem, a concern, a strategy problem, that they have not helped me work through it. And our Commissioners, two of them in particular, have been outstanding at helping us strategize and helping us care for these inmate patients. So again, I just want to say a special thank you for that, and thank you to this team, who takes care of juvenile and adult patients. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank y'all. Thank you.
So, let me read the proclamation, and then we'll take pictures. Whereas National Nurses Day is a day that we celebrate nurses and raise awareness of the importance and the contribution to society. This day, May 6th, is part of National Nurses Week, a week that ends on May 12th and marks the birthday of Florence Nightingale. Whereas President Reagan signed a proclamation, 4913, on March 25th, 1982, proclaiming National Recognition Day for nurses to be May the 6th. And whereas nursing has been a variety of different levels of skills, as well as areas in which they contribute, with each playing important roles with facilities to maintain doctor-patient care, and whereas nurses are one of the most integral part of medical team, fulfilling a crucial role in providing patients for their families and the highest level of care, as well as the key means for emotional support, significantly contributing to the improved patient and family outcomes. And whereas Brazos County wants to recognize all nurses in the community, as well as correctional nurses, for their acts of heroism, compassion, dedication to the duty and commitment of their community. Now therefore be it resolved that Brazos County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim May 6th through May 12th as National Nursing Recognition Week, Brazos County, to increase the public's awareness of the importance of the role nurses play to improve and promote health and wellness to their patients. Proclaim May the 6th, 2025. Anybody else want to speak?
Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much.
That was a lot easier picture to take. We hadn't voted. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number five is approval requested from Human Resources for acceptance of $200 Walmart cards from Wilton's Office Supply to be used for purchase of Health and Safety Expo, June 5, 2025, benefiting the employees of Brazos County, City of College Station, City of Bryan.
Move for approval.
Second.
Most made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number six is approval requested from Human Resources for acceptance of monetary donation in the amount of $300 for insurers of Texas to be used for the purchase of Health and Safety Expo, June 5, 2025, benefiting the employees of Brazos County, City of College Station, City of Bryan.
Move for approval.
Second.
Most made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number seven is approval of agreement 25-111 with La Salle Hotel with Brazos County.
Move approval.
Second.
Most made seconded. Discussion. Judge, I know this is for sequestered jurors. I just hope they're ready when that 3 o'clock train comes through, because that sucker will raise the dead. Thank you, Commissioner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number eight is approval of 25-123 building reports for membership agreements.
Move approval.
Second.
Most made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number nine is award of RFQ CIP 25-529 Architect for Ashford Hills Warehouse and Office Suites. Recommended award is Architect Studio, and we had one that, or maybe there was two, I don't remember, but we had somebody want to speak. Kathy Vines?
Judge, I remember this project being on the agenda maybe a year ago. Could you just review what this whole thing is and the purpose of this Ashford Hills project, the estimate of the cost upon completion, how it's financed, and the purpose of it? I can't quite remember, and probably a lot of other people can either.
So, there'll be an explanation coming up with.
Okay.
Jody Quimby, wanted to speak.
Jody Quimby, 4686 River Garden Court. Hello, Judge and Commissioners, good morning. Wanted to, I had signed up to speak for item number nine and 10, because there's related items I wanted to talk about. First of all, the item number nine, as you just said, is recommended award to Architect Studio, and along with Commissioner Brown, I appreciate that being a local company here. My experience in the commercial construction business over 40 years, and most of it in this community, dealt with Architect Studio many times, and they've done a great job. They're a great firm, and they'll do you a great job. Just to, as a note for those that might not be familiar with this kind of a process, an architect is generally charged with the design of the project, and also oversees the rest of the engineering for the project. And so, with item number 10 here, you're saying that you're planning to not award a construction manager at risk for this Ashford Hills project, which a construction manager at risk typically works with the architectural design firm to develop the project and then construct the project. That's a construction manager at risk. But you're gonna hire an architect to design the project, but not have a construction manager at risk to work with him to get the project done. And the rest of item number 10 says you plan to change from using a construction manager at risk to a design, bid, build, bidding process. For those that may not be familiar, a design-build contract is a contract typically with a construction company, and the construction company hires the design professionals and oversees the entire project as the, in coordination with the owner. So, I'm confused. Why would you hire an architect, which typically designs and oversees the engineering for a project, and not have the construction manager at risk, which would typically work with that architect to develop the project and construct it? So you're doing away with the construction manager at risk, and you're gonna hire somebody who hires architects and engineers to develop a project and construct the project. Do you understand why I'm confused?
Okay. So I'm gonna have Trevor, project manager, or Charles, both, either of both, speak on it, but is that your questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Because if you do what you're saying here, and the operations are conducted as typically are in commercial construction work, you're paying for design work twice.
Okay. Thank you for your questions. I'm gonna let either, whichever wants to speak first or.
Did you have any questions? Are you down with your time?
What, will you, finish up your questions or your comments, so we can.
How much time do I have left?
Well, I'll give you time of three seconds.
Well, anyway. But like I say, most people are not familiar with these different ways of conducting business, and there's, there's, I'm sure, there's more to be explained about why you're doing both of these, but I'd be interested to know why.
Okay. Thank you.
So, to stay relevant to the agenda item for award of the contract for the architect, we are, we have, we are doing just the design of the building at this time. We are not doing any construction for that project at all right now. We want to do the design, and then we would do a contractor at a later date when those funds are made available. Once we better understand what the financial impact is gonna be, we have those estimates from the design firm in.
So, we're gonna develop, all right, an architect would develop the, what we would actually be bidding out?
Yes, sir. And, and they would develop the plans, they would provide all the cost estimates, and then at a later date, we would do, as, as is mentioned in the other agenda item, we would do a design, and then we would bid that design, and then we would do the building of that project.
So we're not gonna be paying an architect again?
No, sir. And actually, we have it broken out in that contract, Judge and Commissioners Court. We have it broken out that we would only do the first, do the programming, the schematic design, design development, construction documents, and then we would stop. That is where we have the pricing for the bidding negotiation and Construction Administration broken out separately. That way, we have that price locked in, but we would not exercise that option until such time that the Commissioners Court allocated funds to do the construction piece.
Charles, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
You know, this, this architect firm's gonna charge $715,000 for this plan. Why would we want to spend that much money right now before we even know if this court will approve spending $10 million in the next budget to build this facility? I mean, if, if we decided, hey, we don't want to do this because it's too expensive, and then we've just wasted $715,000 on an architect, why don't we wait until the money is funded, if it's funded, before we spend $715,000 for an architect?
There are some funds there now.
Well, it doesn't matter. I mean, just, we don't need to waste money just because we need to waste money. I mean.
I, I agree 100%. I'm never an advocate for wasting money. I'm saying that there are, I believe, $5 million right now for the construction. I just don't know that what we have allocated or budgeted right now is gonna be enough for the total project.
Well, last I heard from Trevor yesterday, it's a $10 million project, so.
I mean, that is, that is one estimate that we have, yes, sir. The architect estimated that they thought that it was in the neighborhood of about $8 million, but if you look at all-in cost, we, we're probably close to the, probably close to the $10 million.
So, my question again is, before we even approve paying for this facility, why would we hire an architect for $715,000 before we ever even get to that point?
Commissioner, it is.
And we may not get to that point.
Sure. It is certainly an option not to approve this contract today, and it's done, dead, and finished, then the court can decide what they want to do with the property later on.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I don't in any way want to pressure the court or, or waste money by any stretch to do a project that they do not want to do. That is never, that is never gonna be a stance that purchasing or project management or any department would do.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, if we, if we don't approve an architect so that we can come up with a, with a drawing that we could actually bid out, and if maybe the, the lean is that, well, we need to back up just a little again and say, okay, well, is that something we need? You know, I mean, I guess, I think it's been, this may have actually been on the agenda to, from the past court, to have gone ahead and gone after bid, but there's been many things going on that it just didn't happen until now, so.
So Judge, if I may, the, the purpose of the project is to provide multiple facets, okay? So it would be the receiving, central receiving warehouse. It would be the elections, storage of the voting equipment. It would be the district clerk's storage of the things that they're responsible for storing and records management. We have multiple places that need to be shored up. They are not viable long-term storage solutions where that stuff is currently stored. The district clerk office storage area right here, in the future, in the, I don't want to say near future, in the future, it is potentially gonna be programmed for additional offices and stuff like that. That's a big gem. It's a pretty good-sized area that could be reallocated for office space, potentially even, maybe even two stories in that area. Elections at Arena Hall, that place is overgrown. We need to make sure that we have good-conditioned space that is protective of that equipment. The county has a significant investment in that equipment. We need to make sure that it's secure and, I mean, it's secure, but we need to make sure that we keep it and able to maintain it in the best condition possible. The receiving warehouse is something that we've discussed numerous times through the years. Facility Services currently stores a lot of stuff in their unconditioned warehouse, including copy paper, a lot of paper goods and stuff like that. And so, the thought is that if we were able to buy items in bulk and keep them, preserve them, then we, the county, could gain the advantage of those economics of scale and be able to get better pricing on that many different items. For example, we're buying paper currently for about $45 a case. I talked to College Station ISD, who has a warehouse, they have a central receiving, they're currently buying it for $30 a case, simply because they're able to buy a whole truckload, whereas we're buying it a couple of pallets at a time. So that's a 33% more that we're paying a premium just on that. Now, paper alone's not gonna justify that, but overall, we believe, the jail buys their mattresses, their linens, their different items that we have for the inmates. We buy them in quantities that they're able to handle, but they have to store them in, and Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're storing them in wherever they have space. They don't have a designated storage space. They're putting them in cells or in dorms or whatever, because that's where they have to store them. If we're able to do this, we may be able to buy in quantities that facilitates them needing that space, which in the near future they may, for inmates, and we can keep that stuff stored in, in receiving. Did I overstep any?
So, my concern is the cost that we're paying for the services.
Yes, sir.
On this, and we discussed this. So, the national average for construction of warehouse build is 225 square foot. The design services are normally 10 to 15% of that, and that's what the county typically pays. So that would be $22 to $27 a square foot for 2,300 square feet. So if you add items nine and 13 together, that cost is $776,000 and runs about $33.75 a square foot. So, the question I have is why are we paying the $5, $6 more a foot for design services?
I, I did not figure it per square foot, Commissioner. I apologize for that lapse. I should have taken care of that. I did it as a percentage, because that was, I think, one of the numbers that you mentioned. So just the design services, if you figured the $715,000, that is the entire piece of the design, of which only a portion of that we would pay now, but of other total, it is 8.9%. They are not viable long-term storage solutions where that stuff is currently stored. The district clerk office, storage area right here, in the future, in the, I don't want to say near future, in the future, it is potentially gonna be programmed for additional offices and stuff like that. That's a big gem, it's a pretty good-sized area that could be reallocated for office space, potentially even, maybe even two stories in that area. Elections at Arena Hall, that place is overgrown. We need to make sure that we have good-conditioned space that is protective of that equipment. The county has a significant investment in that equipment. We need to make sure that it's secure and, I mean, it's secure, but we need to make sure that we keep it and able to maintain it in the best condition possible. The receiving warehouse is something that we've discussed numerous times through the years. Facility Services currently stores a lot of stuff in their unconditioned warehouse, including copy paper, a lot of paper goods and stuff like that. And so the thought is that if we were able to buy items in bulk and keep them, preserve them, then we, the county, could gain the advantage of those economics of scale and be able to get better pricing on that many different items. For example, we're buying paper currently for about $45 a case. I talked to College Station ISD, who has a warehouse, they have a central receiving, they're currently buying it for $30 a case, simply because they're able to buy a whole truckload, whereas we're buying it a couple of pallets at a time. So that's a 33% more that we're paying a premium just on that. Now, paper alone's not gonna justify that, but overall, we believe, the jail buys their mattresses, their linens, their different items that we have for the inmates, we buy them in quantities that they're able to handle, but they have to store them in, and Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're storing them in wherever they have space. They don't have a designated storage space, they're putting them in cells or in dorms or whatever, because that's where they have to store them. If we're able to do this, we may be able to buy in quantities that facilitates them needing that space, which in the near future they may, for inmates, and we can keep that stuff stored in, in receiving. That overstep, any?
So my concern is the cost that we're paying for the services.
Yes, sir.
On this, and we discussed this. So the national average for construction of warehouse build is 225 square foot. The design services are normally 10 to 15% of that, and that's what the county typically pays. So that would be $22 to $27 a square foot for 2,300 square feet. So if you add Items 9 and 13 together, that cost is $776,000 and runs about $33.75 a square foot. So the question I have is, why are we paying the $5, $6 more a foot for design services?
I, I did not figure it per square foot, Commissioner, I apologize for that lapse, I should have taken care of that. I did it as a percentage, because that was, I think, one of the numbers that you mentioned. So just the design services, if you figure the $715,000, that is the entire piece of the design, of which only a portion of that we would pay now, but of other total, it is 8.9% of the estimated construction cost that the architect firm provided us, the $8 million, assuming that's correct, okay? And then if you add the commissioning and the design services, then that's 9.9%, which is still 0.1% below what the low end of that average, and we believe for a construction of this type would be, potentially may be appropriate if the court does that. So if we figure it out, run the numbers total, if it is $8 million, if it is $8 million, if we estimate, and this is a very rough estimate, the architect will have to decide this, or help us decide this, if we estimate that it's about 30,000 square foot office space and warehouse for each of the different entities that have to be segmented off, if site work, this is between project management and, and us, we went through this, a very rough number this morning, if site work costs $1.5 million, crazy random number, but based on other projects, we believe that it's in that neighborhood for the drainage, retention pond, site utilities, stuff like that, then that means the building is about $6, $6,500,000.
Except, except the contract doesn't talk about a 30,000 square foot building. The contract for design talks about 20,000.
It, it talks about.
So where do we get additional 10,000 square foot of warehouse?
The contract talks about 20,000 foot of, it says 10,000 square foot of unconditioned warehouse and 10,000 of conditioned warehouse. It does not address any of the office areas at all. And so as I understand it, Records Management, their entire staff?
Would move out there?
You have elections that would have a small office area, the receiving warehouse would have a small office area. I'm, I'm throwing random numbers out, that is not based on any particular study, it is random, and it's probably way bigger than we would need.
Sounds like our contract doesn't reflect what you're talking about, though. That's a concern I have.
Sure. And the, the contract addresses the things that we do know. It addresses that scope of work, we went back and forth over the last multiple weeks trying to make sure that it was reflective of that, not pinning us into something or making assumptions that we believe are not correct, or making too broad of a generalization and leaving it too open-ended. Part of the project includes the programming, the very first line item on the fee schedule is 1%, it's $8,000 for programming, and that's to go through those assumptions and verify that what we have said is completely accurate, that adjacencies, who needs to, you know, about what square footage. As we mentioned, like on the warehouse, I don't know how many square foot it needs to be. We went through and studied about what the, what kind of items would we store in there, and about how many of those pallets we would need to store. So our information that we provided to the previous architect firm that we, that kind of looked at it with us, was we need about 300 pallet spaces in the unconditioned space and 150 in the conditioned space. I don't know if that's 100% correct, those are estimates based on, based on future forecasting and stuff like that. I don't know if you can fit that in, in 20,000 square foot, or if you can fit it in 12,000 square foot. That's not my, that's, that's what we are asking the architect to help us determine, and some of that would be done in the programming and then further on in the schematic design. And so if you run the numbers based on the $6,500,000, based on the, the, then that puts it at about $216 a square foot for the actual building. If you wrap in the site utilities and the drainage and all that, it does drive that number up, but it's not what you're actually spending on that particular building. So we try to give you the numbers the best we can, we don't want to try to draw inferences or make assumptions that, or distort the numbers in any way.
And that's based on today's dollars, not the potential for the cost to go up if we have supply change problems?
Yes, ma'am.
And the cost of construction stuff going up?
And that's a, it's a daily.
Concern.
Watch.
Yeah.
As tweets go out and policies change, we try to maintain flexibility and try to keep an eye on that, but we have no control over that.
So if we lock in the contract on today's dollars, even if some things change in terms of cost of materials and et cetera, et cetera, would we be locked into that today's dollars on the contract?
So the only thing that we're locking in, Commissioner, today would be the design fees, which would include no materials whatsoever. They should not be impacted by any of the governmental regulations that are imposed or relieved or what have you. It would just be the design, and then potentially, if the court saw fit, to allocate funds next year to actually go and build this, then again, every day you build it sooner rather than later, you, there are some potential savings. What those are, I, I would be hesitant to forecast at this point.
So do you have any idea whether delaying would negatively impact any of the, any of the uses for this facility, you know, by pushing it out, not, by not passing what we got on the agenda for an architect today?
Sure.
I mean, the thing that I wonder about, and, I mean, I, I know we're, out of elections, we're pretty tight with the room out there, I know that with the new paper that has to be stored and all, it's, it, it needs to be stored in a climate-controlled area, you know, and then, Trevor, you wanna kind of speak on that?
Sure. I mean, in the, in the bigger picture, I don't, I don't think there's a huge disadvantage other than things get more expensive over time. We're not, the, the, kind of what we were hoping to solve with this project was, you know, several of these entities are kind of shoved into areas that prevent us from being able to do more with the spaces and leverage that in a way that's better for the overall future for the county. The election records, we've, we've, we've bounced those around into, into places that, that are both secure and climate-controlled, but just about the time that we feel good about where they're at, we get, we get more of them and we have to kind of, kind of find a spot for it. County Clerk's Office and Karen and Ashley Space, they've, they've donated some of the space in their records building currently for the, for the election records, so they're, they're in a good spot right now. But that's not a long-term solution, so. But again, no, I don't, I don't, I don't, at, at least in the, in the very short run, there's, there's, I don't, I don't see an issue.
Okay, by, by either delaying or voting this down, wh- what would be the next step if, if we don't approve the architect that's, that's recommended today? What would be the next step? Where would we go from there?
So the purchasing would request clarification from the court on what you wanted to do. If it is a, if it is a matter of, we do not see the value in this project, then we will go back and we would no, request a no award from the court, we would go back and end any future discussions. If you say, hey, I think there is value to continuing on with the design and, but you, you're too free with our money, you need to get the contract price down. We can do one of two things, we can go back to the current firm that was evaluated as the highest, most qualified, and we can say, hey, we need to negotiate down some, we would probably have to give up some scope in some way, shape, form, or fashion, whether that's we self-perform some of that, which I don't know what that would be, I don't know that we have in-house talent to be able to do that unless we got Ms. Parthena to start drawing some of the civil stuff or addressing some of that, or we could just end negotiations with them if that's the court's wishes and go to the next highest, most evaluated, highest evaluated firm. So that, there's a number of options. We could no award, we could go back and try to do better with the current firm, or we could end negotiations with that firm and go to the next one and try to, try to get a contract that would be acceptable to the court. If there may be other options, I'm.
Charles, I don't have any, I don't have any problem with the, with the, with the, with the architect firm, especially because it's local, thank you. But again, it just gets down to, we're spending almost $800,000 before we even know if we have the money budgeted in this next budget cycle to pay for the facility.
Sure. To some degree, Commissioner, I, I understand that point, and it's kind of chicken or egg, right? So you have a need for something, so do you go assign a random number to it and say, hey, we're gonna design and build it, make it work for that number? We've run into that, we've run into that wall a few times and stubbed our toe in that we maybe did it artificially too high, too low, and the taxpayers were taxed for money we didn't necessarily need for that project, or they were, we didn't ask for enough money, and so we cut scope and we wound up making it work with lesser facilities, lesser rooms, stuff like that, and we shoehorn it in, we make it work. And so, or do you go ahead and say, hey, let's go ahead and we're gonna, this is a need, it's a value to the county, to the citizens, we're gonna go ahead and do a thorough investigation, a full design of it, and then get the money to build a project and go from there?
I'd, I'd rather see us do a workshop on it so we can really get in, into the nitty-gritty as far as exactly what we need, and, and exactly what we need may not be to this extent. You know, all these offices and everything else, there, there can be ways that we can save money if we just sit down and have a workshop about it.
We're happy to do so. Whatever the court wishes, I mean, we're, we serve at your's pleasure.
Okay, so if, if this is not, if this gets voted down, that, it still could, you'll get direction from the court about where do you, what's the next step?
We would like a.
Whether it's a workshop or?
Yes, sir.
And we'll have those discussions or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Judge, can I just move that we table this until?
Okay.
Until further, further notice?
That works. Second.
Okay. Motion made seconded to table, further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Not, one opposition. Number, and I, number 10. I get, Charles, you wanna, since this, these two are tied together, this, should this get tabled also?
Please, sir. Yes, sir.
Move to table, item number 10.
Second.
Motion made seconded to table, and let me ask, because I had, I had Jody and Kathy both asked to speak, are you satisfied with what's, okay, all right. Did you want to speak? You can speak on 10. Okay. Possibly on number 10, the wording at the end of that, that statement, changing the project to a design bid, building, bidding process, that wording might not be correct from what Charles explained. It, it, I, I don't think that's what you intended, right?
No, it is what we intended, I'd be happy to explain the law to you in a little bit if you're all right with that.
But if you're.
If we're not doing design-build, if, if, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to get in the back and forth, but the intent is, the intent is not to do a design-build, where you hire a firm and then they hire the contractor and do that. Our intent is that we would design the project, we would bid that design, and then we would hire a contractor.
I, 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 that's fine, I understand that. It's just the way it was written didn't come across that way. Do you understand the difference from what I was talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right, thanks. So I've got a motion and a second to table number 10. Is that correct? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One opposition, motion carries. Number 11 is approval of no award for RFP 25 dash 20, CIP 25 dash 571 compensation and benefits study due to lack of qualified proposal responses.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 12 is permission to re-advertise for CIP 25 dash 571 compensation and benefits study.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion.
I seconded it for discussion purposes, but.
Okay.
I, I can't help but wonder if this isn't something that we could look at doing in-house, even if we have to table it today to answer that question. But, you know, last week, we approved a, a study, we approved potentially our ADA compliance hiring in-house and handling that is an ongoing deal. My, my question here is, could we do a similar thing here with this compensation and benefits study?
Good morning, Commissioners Court. I want, it's budget and HR, we're gonna make some comments to this. Currently, we do not have staff to do this in-house. And second of all, we would like to have a third party come in and take the politics out of personnel. Right now, we do have political decisions are made based on personnel that should not be made, and I think it's best for us to have someone outside to come in to help us with that. Third of all, we're trying to change our grouping of our personnel to where we're going off the group and step chart, which doesn't really make sense and help us out regarding saving money on positions, to put them on ranges. That way, based on qualifications, expertise.
Education.
Education, job duties, it would help them put them in line with that cost or that price per hour. And that's my spiel, don't let HR piggyback on other stuff.
Correct. The purpose of the project is to create a classification system, review all of our job descriptions, create a classification system so that positions can be paid appropriately and we have internal equity as well as external equity for all of our positions, in addition to looking at performance evaluations and other things like, and our benefits, other things like that. Any other questions?
Chuck, I agree with you. I, you know, I think $150,000 is a lot of money to spend on a project like this, and I think that we have enough talent. I mean, you all understand what the issues are, you know what the problems are, so why aren't we, no, don't you say a word until I get finished? I know how you are with that money. But I mean, you all understand what the issues are and what the problems are, so why can't we take care of it in-house without spending $150,000 to do it?
Do you want the truth?
I want your answer.
My answer?
Staff is telling us the truth when they speak to us, right?
It's the, it's the backing, it's the support from Commissioners Court. When we do not support a decision based on law or ethics, it's overwritten. So if we are trying to make a decision based on salary or hourly, and we have backup showing that should not be salary or hourly, and we make the decision to bring it to court stating we do not believe that should be hourly, hourly salary or paid at a certain rate because we have all the backup to it, and it gets overwritten, and then it helps us skew all these other positions that are aligned the same, like clerk ones, twos.
What if the company we hired came back with the same proposal that you're talking about?
But I don't think that they'll do that.
Well, we don't know.
Because of the, the, it, one of the things I learned since I've been engaged with staff issues is the how this, this, this step, what do you call it?
Group intercept chart.
Step group thing takes, it doesn't take into consideration expertise, it doesn't take into, I was amazed that if you had someone with a college degree, because of the step range and, you know, sort of like if you have a clerk, that clerk, no matter what their educational background, what their years of service, what their experience is, because of the, the payroll system, that person is locked into, okay, they have to be step something, group A, B, C, Q. We need someone, in my opinion, who can come in and come up with a different system. I don't know how long the county has had this step group system, but it is so, my word, antiquated in terms of how you pay or acknowledge the experience of whatever a person brings to the pay, that brings to the work that they do for the county. It is so diff, it is so different than anything I've ever experienced as a professional, where, you know, yes, I understand that clerk in this department may do this work, but you may have a clerk in a different department that brings a different talent, skill set, but you can't acknowledge that because there's, there's this system that says clerk in this county, in this department, and this clerk pretty much have to be paid the same because of this group step system. Now, that's my perspective on it, and I fully think that the county needs to upgrade their career ladder employment system to acknowledge and recognize the people that we're hiring, we're changing, we have an educated populace here in Bryan College Station, but that talent is not always able to be recognized because of the current system that is in place for the county.
I would like to have one of the assistant district attorneys who is on the committee to help us, um, regarding the first award that was, um, rejected, and he's still on the committee. This is Brian Baker.
Commissioners, Judge, thank you. Um, I think, just to be perfectly frank, is that I'm working in an environment where we're, we are losing talent, and we're losing out to counties because we just haven't figured this out. And the fact is, is that I can do this, when you say I could do this. I can do this, and I can sway you guys in any way you want me to. I can pick the counties that I know are paying a million dollars more than we're paying, and I could bring you a salary study that says that you guys need to increase the salary on every one of the departments by 50%. And I could also go find the counties that are not doing a very good job, and I can internally do that, and I can bring you something that says that we should pay people less and we should just suffer. And the fact is, is that we don't have the breadth of knowledge, we don't have the experience right now to get a full picture of what is reality in Texas, because we need to do this comparable counties, comparable positions in order to drive talent, keep people here that we have, because we're losing people to other counties. And overall, I believe that this court should approve this in order to give us a accurate picture of where we are deficient and where we are overspending. I mean, this can just as equal, just as easily show us that we are doing a bad job across county and overpaying in a, in one area as we are underpaying in other areas. And I think that without, and the fact is, we didn't think that this contract should be awarded right now because the breadth of knowledge that this company brought us was not enough to give us that true picture. So as a committee, we said, this doesn't do what we need to give you guys the information to spend our money accurately, right? And so what we're asking, what I would ask is, to give us the opportunity to have a company come in that has the ability to do the full breadth of what we need so that we can set ourselves on a path to being competitive and not overpaying. So that's from my perspective.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, any more discussion? So, number 12 is permission to re-advertise for CIP. Is that correct? Is that what we're ready? Yep. CIP 25 571 compensation and benefits study.
And I, you ready?
All in favor, I want, oh, you want to speak?
Have we already moved to approve?
Didn't we?
We have a motion and a second.
I think we have a motion and a second.
Okay.
So, since there's been discussion back and forth, I think I'm gonna have a raise of hands. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. So, I, I did see which direction you-
I said yes.
Okay, so that's, it passes. Uh, thank you. Yeah, but with two oppositions. Okay. So, uh, we will move on to number 13. It's approval of CIP 25 dash 599 commissioning services for Ashford Hills Warehouse and Office Suites with Tom Green and Company Engineers, Inc. for $81,430. And let me ask, yeah, we want to table this one also. Okay. Let me, let me, first, Kathy Vines wanted to speak. Is, okay, all right. Do I need a motion?
Motion to table?
Second.
Motion made seconded to table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 14 is consider and take action on Bryan Utilities BTU cost estimate of $6,224.66 to relocate existing pole guy wire. This work is needed in order to accommodate the proposed widening of Cottonton Bridge Road sites located precinct one.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion.
Judge, I'm abstaining from voting on this so that I avoid the perception of conflict of interest.
Okay. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, and one abstention. Okay, passes. Uh, number 15 is consider to take action on frontier communication's utility permit to install 3, 3,800 feet of fiber optic conduits within the right-of-way of Shirley Road. Project includes road bores of Shirley Road, Bourbon Lane, and Whiskey River Road, sites located precinct two.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 16 is approve the treasurer's report for February 2025.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 17 is budget amendments, FY 24, 25 budget amendments, 29.01 through 29.06.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 18 is personnel change status.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 19 is payment of claims, uh, claims to be paid or A, 820 9437 through 820 9543, and claim number 920 4246 through claim number 920 4322. And, let me see, I think I had, uh, Karen Simpson wanted to speak on that.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Hi. Um, this week's agenda had, uh, under the payment of claims, had payment to Hart, and Hart Inter-Civic is our election machine company for Brazos County. Uh, the payment requested for this week were two, there were $3,500 and $1,800. Also, on April 8th, uh, there were four charges requested by Elections Administrator for off-supplies, printing, equipment maintenance, and computer contracts, totaling 19,000 plus. So, um, on March 25th of this year, President Trump submitted an executive order 14248, preserving and protecting the integrity of American elections. The order promotes free, fair, and honest elections, unmarred by fraud, errors, or suspicion. Since then, 19 states and other plaintiffs have challenged the constitutionality of the executive order. Um, most argue the order violates U.S. Constitution and multiple federal laws. Their argument has to do with proof of citizenship. Others demanded to keep their extended ballot receipt deadlines. However, none of the objectors had a problem with Section 4 BI of the above executive order, which states, "The amended guidelines shall provide that voting systems should not use a ballot in which a vote is contained within a barcode or quick response code in the vote counting process, except where necessary to accommodate individuals with disabilities, and should provide a voter-verifiable paper record to prevent fraud or mistakes." The last time I voted was during the general election last November 5th, and I remember seeing barcodes on the ballots we used here in Brazos County. On the same day, another executive order was posted, "Securing Federal Elections and Restoring Confidence in the American Voting Process," one day when vote hand count were cast. The policy for that executive order stated, states, "It will be the policy of this administration that no electronic election infrastructure of any type will be permitted for United States federal elections until further notice." But we're paying for contracts for Hart. Um, our next scheduled election will be March of 2026. That's less than a year from now. Until then, there's always a chance that we may need a special election. My questions are, are these charges going to eliminating the barcode? Will our machines be able to be certified without it? Will we still be using Elections machines despite the second mentioned executive order?
So, let me, uh, are you, have you asked your questions in your-
Three questions.
Okay, you have a seat then. Uh, I'm gonna let Trudy speak to that first.
Okay, so first of all, we do have an election this year in November. Uh, so November, uh, March is not our first election, uh, and it will not have any federal, um, offices on that, uh, ballot. It will be a constitutional amendment, and then, uh, both of our school districts, uh, both are slated for elections in November. Um, as to the barcode, uh, the barcode on our ballots, or is, uh, just, um, the numeration or the ballot number? It does not, uh, contain any votes. Uh, our system is an OCR system. It reads exactly what is printed on the ballot. Our system does not use, uh, barcode in counting or tabulating your ballots. We do use a voter-verifiable paper trail. When you make your selections on the equipment, uh, you put your paper in, your selections come up on, come out on your paper, you take the time to look at that paper and verify that everything printed out correctly like it was supposed to, and then you place your ballot in the ballot scanner, in the scanner. So that is a verified, voter-verifiable paper trail. So our system, uh, should, or is still, um, a certified system. Uh, Texas has not decided, uh, we have not received any notification from the Secretary of State's office as to, uh, the direction in which Texas will be going. Uh, as you know, uh, we cannot act independently of, uh, what we're instructed to do, um, other than, you know, what we're instructed to do from the Secretary of State's office and what Texas as a whole, uh, does with its election processes. Uh, we can't independently just decide ourself. Any other questions from the court?
No other questions. Thank you, Trudy. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I don't know, you don't have a, kind of a motion or a second?
We had any other motion in a sec? Was there any time left, counsel?
No, sir.
Okay.
Move approval?
I didn't say have a call.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second. Motion and a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 20 is acknowledgement of the Brazos County Sheriff's Office SB 22 Rural Law Enforcement Grant expenditure in the amount of $212,000 for the following: commercial motor vehicles, trucks, safety, grill guard, and firearms.
Move approval?
And then, that was an acknowledgement. So then, 21 is-
Judge, can I, can I make a, I just have a FYI.
Okay.
The, the truck is $107,000, and I don't have any problem with that, but I just want to remind the people in the audience that in 1986, when I became a partner of the Ford dealership in Navasota, a new Ford truck with automatic and air conditioning was only $8,375. We've come a long way, baby.
Man, wow. Yeah, I understand. Okay, so that was an acknowledgement. 21 is acknowledgement of the month report, county auditor, uh, for February 2025. 22 is acknowledgement of the state inspector's report for November 2024 general election. And I know that Cindy wanted to speak, you, you want me to let, go ahead, come on up.
Morning. So I have a comment, and then I have a question. We had state inspectors that would show up at their polling location on early voting and Election Day, and they wore these vests, and some interacted with the people and some did not. Like, in my polling location, um, the person did not address me. I think they were there for like 10 minutes maybe, at the most. Um, I looked around, I saw somebody with the, you know, safety vest on. Um, we got busy, and then I turned around and like, the person had disappeared. So, um, I just kind of confused as to really what their purpose was. Um, I did see, and I don't know if you guys have looked at this, but there is like a four-page list of questions that they checked off. Um, and I've gone over, I can only speak for my polling location. But, um, what I did notice is there seems to be a confusion coming from our state inspectors about what kind of voting system we use. And I had just asked Trudy before the meeting started, um, my understanding was we use Verity Duo, and she confirmed that is, but on two of these state inspectors, they marked, they didn't mark the correct voting system. So, I don't know if you're going to approve these, or you're just accepting them. But if you approve them, there's some information that's not correct on here, so just making you guys aware of that. If you're just accepting them, I guess you'll just accept them. But my question is, are you accepting or are you approving?
It's an acknowledgement. We don't have to vote on it.
Okay.
I was gonna get Trudy to explain what that was. You can have a seat, but I was gonna get Trudy to explain what it was.
So, a state inspector is basically a poll watcher that's appointed by the Secretary of State's office. Uh, they go through training, uh, with the Secretary of State's office on specific things to look for, uh, things allowed and not allowed in the polling places, um, and things like that. Uh, different from a poll watcher, the state inspector does fill out a report for the Secretary of State's office. Um, and then those reports are just housed at the Secretary of State's office. I don't really know what they do with them. I always, uh, request copies of those state inspector reports, uh, when I know that we've had a state inspector. Uh, we normally pull a state or inspector for a November election. Uh, we've had one for the past several years, or multiple inspectors. Um, they're either, um, the state automatically sends them, I mean, arbitrarily sends them to different, uh, counties, uh, or if someone from our county makes a request, uh, for a state inspector, then they send a state inspector. Um, it helps me in, um, looking at our locations, you know, Election Day, we have 28 locations. Uh, sometimes we don't know, uh, of problems going on in the polling place if a, you know, if a voter doesn't call us, or, or things like that. And so that helps us to determine if we have polling places that are doing things that, uh, they are not supposed to, or not doing things that are required by the law, uh, that's, you know, abject to the, the training that they receive. So, uh, these reports are just, uh, for our benefit to see, uh, if we have areas that we have shortfalls that we need to improve on, or if we have things, uh, you know, other than that, that we're doing well. Uh, we did not have any, uh, problems in any of the reports. Uh, I'm not sure why they checked the wrong box as to the kind of system that we're using, uh, and I don't know that that's really germane to the, to the process at all.
Okay. All right. Any questions? All right, it's an acknowledgement, so that's, uh, you received it, so.
Judge, can I speak?
Um, all that is an acknowledgement, so we're not gonna take any action. There's no action to be taken, so it was just an acknowledgement. Uh, number 23 is acknowledgement of FY 2024, 2025 budget actuals of by fund as of April 30, 2025, and an acknowledgement of FY 2024, 2025 contingency budget actuals by fund as of April 30, 2025. Number 24 is juvenile director's report on detention population.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have 34 in detention, 19 males, 15 females, and 34 on electronic monitor.
Okay, thank you. 25 sheriff's report on inmate population. Chief.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This morning, we have 743 total, 638 males, 105 females, and there are 49 on electronic monitor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, 26 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Judge, I'll read from the county website. Brazos County invites the public to attend the second open house to review its share input on the refined alignment concepts for the proposed interlease, interloop east in Brazos County. Join the study team to learn about the study's purpose and need, refined alignment concepts, traffic modeling, and next steps. Public input is essential to the process. Your feedback will help shape the study's development and future decisions. That is today from 5 to 7 at Legends Event Center. Bring your umbrella.
Judge, next week, uh, I will be in Washington, DC with the chamber representing the county. So, I'll be miss- missing this meeting.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Judge, I'd like to applaud Charles and his department for the tremendous effort that they put forward in the vendor fair last week in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce. We had a great turnout, and the chamber has already said they want to do this with us every year.
Mm-hmm. Good.
There were a lot of people there. It was, I was actually taken aback by how full that was when I, when I showed up.
Great. And I also want to announce that on June 10th, we'll have Precinct 3 Town Hall meeting.
Okay. Okay, so under interest items, I'll, I've got a few things that I need to, to address because there's been some false accusations, including in last week's meeting, that allege that there's a lack of transparency about the East Loop. For clarity, I want to walk through the sequence of events leading up to the November 2022 bond election. So first, there was a public workshop on July the 28th, 2022. There were over 40 in attendance, and we popped the slide up there. This was a slide that was given in that public workshop, and the media attended that public workshop. And if you'll notice, the number one project list, the number, at the top of the list, it says inner loop east. So from the beginning, inner loop east was listed as one of the projects of the seven that was included in that bond issue. And all of that was before the bond issue actually became the ballot. This was in July the 28th of 2022. So several months before the election. So next, the, the, show the next slide. So there was, there was mailers that were, that were mailed out to, to promote what the election was about. And so there's, go ahead, show it. There's, there's one, do the next one also. These are, those, those two are the front and the back of a mailer that was sent out not once, but twice. So go to that second page, and then what I did was, was blew this up, so hopefully we can read it there to the next slide. So, and what I, what I did on this thing was, I, I went ahead and labeled this red writing that's on that project 1, 2, 3, 4. That wasn't a part of that mailer, but what I did was look at what was presented at that workshop in July of 2028, 20, July the 28th of 2022. And I put, the first on the list was project 1. The first on that list was East Loop. And if you'll look, project 1 here, it says Bryan Inner Loop East from State Highway 6 to WD Fitch, new location, Super Street. That is that long red line, and you can see it on the, on the upper right-hand side of, of that particular map, which was mailed out not once, but twice to every registered voter in Brazos County. Full transparency. Everyone should have known, I mean, I don't, I don't know what's any, in, in any voter's mind when they go to the polls. Clearly, they, there's, they voted down Prop B, which was for fees, car, car fees for the RMA. So they voted against that, but supported by 67%. That's what the, the vote was, 67% positive on the, the bond issue projects. That was fully transparent. Everything was out there for the public to see. Go to the next slide. So, and, and this is, this just shows, this is the results from the election. 67.13 was what's far, and against was 32.87. It was, it was, the, the, the people of Brazos County that voted were fully in support of those, that bond issue, which included all of the seven projects. The, the seven projects were selected by collaborative, by Brazos County, two cities, Texas A&amp;M and Tech Dot. Some of the projects were fully funded, not fully, they were partially funded, but would likely be years before they would actually be built, and I'm talking about the other six, without the bond fund passing. The funds for the East Loop were to be used to get through, through the state and federal clearance to preserve a route. There's no money available for construction of the East Loop. The East Loop was, was on prominent display for all registered voters to see. And the wording on the ballot, it was, it was outside Bond Council that, that tries to make sure that we're all totally in compliance. Outside Bond Council is the one that gave us the, the wording for the ballot. But what you have to look at is that, okay, the ballot may not say every particular project, but what you advertise as, that's where you hold the commissioner's feet to the fire, is here's what they said they're going to do, and then, but make sure that that's exactly what they're doing. And those seven projects are still, there's nothing's changed. It's absolutely exactly the same as it was proposed from the beginning at that workshop, through all the advertisements that got sent out, exactly the same projects, including that East Loop. The election results were clear mandate of the people, 67% approval to move forward on the proposed bond projects. It's the responsibility of this court to respect the will of the people. And as county judge, I'll make sure this is done with integrity and transparency. It's not my position to say I'm going to overturn the election that was duly done by the, by the citizens of Brazos County, overwhelmingly in support of a proposition. And for me to, I mean, if, that would be totally inappropriate for this court or me to say, well, we're going to toss out what you told us to do and do something totally different. Sorry. That's really all I have to say.
May I address the court?
No. No. So is there any other announcement? Well, we are adjourned, and it's 11:47.